Good evening. The time is now five oh three. And I would like to call to order our first Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting of the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five school year. My name is Sheila Adams Stafford, and I am the Board Liaison for the Disability Issues Advisory Board and the District Four Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I want to thank you all for being here with us this evening. Uh, the formation of this group has been many years in the making, and I'm so happy that everyone is here so that we can improve um upon uh disability issues within our district. Ms. Johnson, please call the roll.
Mr. Jongo. Janie Payne. Trinell Bowman.
Here.
Irma Kettrell. Rachel Doyle.
Here.
Erica Wingate Robinson.
Here.
Sarah L. Byrne. Sylvia Maya.
Here.
Alita Jerry Carter.
Here. Hi, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to speak. This is Sarah Byrne, I'm present.
Okay. Alita Jerry Carter.
Present.
Teresa Smith.
Here.
Stephanie Blackwell.
Here.
Brittany Patrick.
Present.
Sharice Vickery.
Here.
And Samantha Dawson Williams. Okay, we have Quam.
All right, thank you so much. With a Quam present, the Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting will come to order. The question is, shall the Advisory Board adopt the November sixth, two thousand and twenty four disability disability issues Advisory Board meeting agenda? Is there any discussion on the agenda? It's posted on Board Docs if you haven't accessed that yet. And I apologize that I'm sounding so low. I lost my voice. And so I hope to have a stronger voice in the future. Okay, Ms. Johnson, please call the roll.
Ms. Maya.
I'm here.
Yeah, um, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Yes, this is for approving the agenda. So this is an I or a N?
Okay, uh, Ms. Blackwell. Were you were you supposed to make a motion?
Um. I don't have that here. Um.
Are we following Robert's rules of order?
Ms. Adam Stafford, may I speak?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, so she did make a motion. She said the question is whether whether um and that's how we make a motion because of the size of the board. We don't have to have a second. And so she, after she made the motion, which is the question is whether she went to a roll call vote and Ms. Johnson began calling the roll call vote.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. Because every board operates differently, and I've operated on bigger boards and they still go for a motion, but that's fine.
All right, so at this time, we're going to, I'll say that again. Um, so shall the board adopt the November sixth, November sixth, two thousand and twenty four Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting? And then I asked if there was any discussion. There was none, so I asked Ms. Johnson to please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Maya.
Aye.
Ms. Blackwell.
Aye.
Ms. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Byrne.
Aye.
Ms. Carter.
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson Williams. Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Jongo. Ms. Kettrell. Ms. Patrick.
Aye.
Ms. Payne. Ms. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Ms. Vickery.
Aye.
Mrs. Wingate Robinson.
Aye.
There are eleven in the affirmative. The motion's passed.
Thank you. The November sixth, two thousand and twenty four Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting agenda is adopted. So before we get started, um, moving on to item two point O. Before we get started, I wanted to provide a little background on the Disability Issues Advisory Board. The purpose of this advisory board is to provide information to the Board of Education on the following issues as well as other related issues which may arise in the course of the advisory board's work, along with any recommendations to address compliance matters, such as the implementation of board policies regarding access for individuals with disabilities at all Prince George's County Public School System facilities to the extent feasible, proposed new construction, and employment and hiring issues on behalf of the Board of Education. So, um, now that I have shared uh the purpose of this advisory board, let's take a few moments to introduce ourselves. I would love for each of you to share your name and a little bit about what your interest, what interested you in joining the DIAB. And so I'll start us off, and then um whoever would like to go next can va can um proceed after me. So again, I'm Sheila Adams Stafford, District Four, Board of Education member. And the reason that I have been pushing for this group uh to be uh developed or to re to be re um um reactivated over the past several years is because some of the most uh, one of the most um common complaints or uh emails that I receive as a board member is around access, particularly for our students and staff with disabilities. Um, and access can mean a variety of different things. Access to our physical buildings, but then also access to our curriculum and content and the work that happens in classrooms. And so um, I knew that there were some amazing community advocates out there, such as yourselves. We're gonna help us improve and work with um the school board to implement policies that will make a difference. Um, and so if there's anybody that would like to go next, um, please introduce your name and your district that you represent. Um, and what interested you in joining this group? Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Maya. Uh, my district is four. And what interests me into joining is I am a parent and I was a young parent. Um, so I am speaking from experience, and I feel like I can really help the community with my experience and the difficulties that I've um experienced with my daughter, um, who is now eighteen, but she's still in school. Um, so that's really what interests me. This is my first board. Um, so I'm really excited to join and to learn from you guys. Um, and I'm here to really answer any questions, especially coming from a personal experience.
Shout out District Four. Okay, um, you all can just feel free to come up with me if you'd like to go next. Thank you.
I can go next. Um. My name is Stephanie Blackwell. My district is District Six. And what interested me to be a part of the board is my three children all have various disabilities and they're a product of Prince George's County Public Schools. And to share with you all, one has Asperger, who is now a plan for doctoral program. Um, I have one another do another uh adult child who is a graduate of Marshall University, who has three degrees. Um, I have a second daughter who is a MA, medical assistant. And my granddaughter is a product of Prince George's County now at Laurel High School, who has an IEP, who's in IB and the honors program at law. So, and she's doing amazingly great, so, yeah.
Those are just the stories we love to hear. Thank you so much, Ms. Blackwell, for being here. Thank you. Okay, go on to our next parent or our community member.
You can go next. Um, my name is Sharice Vickery. I um and and I live in District Eight, representing District Eight. But my child actually attends in District Seven at Benjamin D. Floy. Um, I wanted to join because I did not have a wonderful time um coming into the school district. My daughter, um, I'm a licensed clinician, um, and I've been in healthcare for over twenty-two years. And um when I first engaged with PG CPS, um, I was like, hey, so yeah, I know we're coming out of COVID, but like these are the things that are happening. And they kind of wrote me off, and I was just like, wait, all these degrees behind me, and I'm clinically telling you what's happening. And it was awful. It was awful. Um, I had to escalate so many times to the point where um you guys almost did it on the news with me. And so it was just like, all right, there has to be a different way to fix this. And I have to work from the inside out, because like if I'm experiencing this as a licensed clinician, as someone who can diagnose and treat children and adults and who has done so for over twenty-some odd years, I'm not alone if I can't even get my own child um to have a positive experience in this school district. Um, and also being married to an educator who is an administrator. So I'm like, we had all the roadmap there, and for it never to ever work was just extremely wild. So that's why I'm here. Um, she is doing well, though. She is um a straight A student in the first grade. And I have another little one coming up behind her who is not on the spectrum. Um, but I just hope to like kind of lend my voice and kind of help however, in any way can, because my experience should not be anybody else's experience ever again.
Hi there. Um, my name is Sarah Byrne. I'm with uh, or I'm in District Three. I've got two children, PG CPS. Um, and one of them um has a couple of different learning disabilities. And um so, yes, so um part of what I hope to do here is to work with other like-minded folks and to raise awareness about the prevalence of neurodiversity within our school system and to raise awareness about the importance of early intervention. Um, and also to hopefully work with the school board to um make that information more accessible. Um, so that parents aren't coming to the table unaware. Give us, give us all um space to be equal players. Um, and yeah, my goal is to help be a conduit and a bridge between the board, the community, um, and the school board. Um, on on how great our schools are and how great our children are as well, you know, children of all minds and types. So yeah, I wear a couple of different hats. I've been a lawyer in the past. I currently do marketing, um, done journalism as well. You know, ask me in a couple of years, we're doing something else, but um, yeah, I'm happy to be a part of this board. Thank you. Oh, and I I need to pop off, um, but I'm gonna jump back on. I need to collect kiddos, all that. You all know how that goes, but I will be back on in about ten minutes. Thank you.
Now, um, before we go to our next person, I wanted to acknowledge former board member Jocelyn Rout, who was instrumental in helping to get this um board passed. Thank you for being here. Um, former board member Jocelyn Rout. Can we move on to the next person?
Hi all, I'll jump in. My name is Brittany Patrick. She/her pronouns. I am a PG CPS grad and a current Sutland, Maryland resident, District Seven. I'm a former special educator. I've taught elementary special education in both Washington DC and San Antonio, Texas. And I've also spent some time in my career as a non-attorney advocate, representing parents across the state of Maryland and DC. I am currently a senior policy analyst in disability rights and inclusion for the largest labor union in the nation, which represents educators across the country. And I am most interested in serving on the board because I'm passionate about disability rights. I'm passionate about K twelve education. And more than anything, the experiences of our students and families in PG County. And so I'm looking forward to lending my expertise to continuing to grow the district that I feel gave so much to me. So looking forward to working with all of you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Doyle. I represent District Two. Um, I am here because I have two children in PG CPS. One has an IEP and one has a five oh four. Um, throughout the time I've been dealing with special education, I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I came here because I would like to see some change on the school side. And I would also like to find ways to make the information um that parents need to know more accessible, because we all know the squeaky wheel gets the grease when it comes to special education. Um, I'm also a licensed clinician. I have the ability to diagnose, and I also, um, I have what I hope is a unique perspective of being able to look at things for on a very small scale, look at what's going on in schools and classrooms, and also looking at a wider perspective of what's going well and poorly system-wide. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Erica Wingate Robinson. I'm from District Three. I have two children in PG CPS. Um, I am here because I have one son with a disability, and we've had a difficult time with him and wanting to try and help make a change for the better for like other parents that are going through a similar thing.
Hello, my name is Alita Jerry Carter. I'm mother of two children with multiple disabilities in Prince George's County Public Schools. I am also a graduate of um Prince George's County Public Schools. I graduated from Laurel High School in two thousand and four. Um, but it was a completely different system. Um, I, uh, Sharice's story resonated with me a lot. Um, I am a licensed pediatric nurse practitioner. I do not, I no longer clinically practice. I currently work in public health. Um, but the the math just wasn't mathing. It wasn't adding up. Um, and so the reason why I joined this group um is because I do consider myself to be someone that's pretty well-connected. Um, and I realized that while I was able to get the services that I needed outside of the school system, after being denied them from the school system, many parents don't have those same connections. Um, and black and brown children and second English language learners um experience disparities and inequities at alarming rates when compared to their white counterparts statistically. So I'm interested in sustainable, evidence-based change um that is backed by data. Um, and I really want to see the equity achievement gap close. And that, and I hope that this group will facilitate that in a meaningful and tangible way.
Um, I I came in a little late, so I'm not sure who went. Hi, everyone. I'm Samantha. I'm uh the representative for District Nine. I know Alita, Corinne, and some of y'all here. Trinell, how are you? And some of y'all have worked with me. I'm a very passionate mom as well. I have five boys. Out of the five, four have IEP, had I, well, one had had an IEP. Um, he's now in college, uh, just turned eighteen years old. And he, we ended up homeschooling my older two sons just because we were having so many issues with the school district. And it's not this district. It was, uh, we're a military family. I'm an army vet. My whole family is military. Um, so we've moved a lot. And so they went to school, starting from Georgia, then we moved to Northern Virginia. And the issue is just having black sons. It's just, I knew it was gonna be a battle. And then you have a child with special needs. It was a battle. I've been advocating and fighting for basically eighteen something years for my sons. And so now that I have the younger three coming up um and dealing with kind of like the same issues here in PG County, I just wanted to be a voice, use my experience, and like others have said, be more of like a liaison between parents and the resources that I see that are available. Because I feel like a lot of parents don't know those resources are out there, and they have been instrumental in getting me the help and services that I need for my sons, who are now actually doing very well in their schools. Um, but it it took a lot of fighting and just kind of like tripping over, finding things by accident. And I just feel like every parent should not. A lot of parents will never find out about these 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 resources, and every parent should not have that experience. So I'm hoping to create some change. Um, like I said, we're all, my family's military, so I'm really big on order. Um, and I don't like when things are like disorganized, and I feel like there should be an easier route for parents to come into PG CPS and find out their child's IEP and know exactly what that process is gonna be, and I'm hoping that I can help to facilitate that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Teresa Smith. Um, I am one of the parents that was advocating for this board to be reactivated. Um, I'm a parent of PG CPS for over ele, I have been one for over eleven years. And all three of my children, one had an IEP because he is now a graduate. Um, and then my youngest have IEPs. What has been unfortunate is that my experience has been the same throughout the entire process. So I am a part of this group essentially to just be a part of the change that I wish to see. Um, in my review of policies that were out there, I came across this one. Um, so I did the legwork to try to get this reactivated. So I'm excited to work with you all. I'm excited about all of the stories that I just heard. Um, and I believe some good things will come forth from here. Thank you.
All right, I wanted to also allow um our members from the administration and from the board office to also introduce themselves as well. Please.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Trinell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education. Um, and what I would hope to get out of this um policy group is a collaborative partnership. We know that there are areas of our um system that definitely needs to be improved. We have launched a um two point O strategic plan to address many of the gaps that we've seen um in our policy and practices. Um, and so I just hope that we can collaborate and move forward with positive outcomes for our students um with disabilities um as we move forward um with the policy work of this committee.
Okay, because it was silent, I will go. I'm Revel D. Fitzpatrick. He, him, he is. I'm the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Um, what am I trying to get? Of course, we know that the board's role is making uh decisions, uh, providing oversight, um approving the budget to requests from county council. And what I hope to gain is data. I think one of the members who spoke talked about, here's my experience, right? And so what I'm hoping to gain is the valuable data that board members don't always get because they're not always in the classrooms. Like you all are the experts and you're scholars. And I'm hoping to get helpful information so that I can process it and make sure that the board is making the most informed decisions to help all of our students across the board.
Did we get everyone? I don't think so. There we go.
My name is Keith Blackson. I'm the coordinating supervisor in Department of Special Education. I'm here as an alternate uh with uh our associate Bowman. Um, I am also from District One. My kids went to Prince George's County Public Schools. They've both graduated now, and uh one's in the medical field and the other is a historian. So um I see myself not only as an employee, but I'm a community member. And um I've invested thirty years of my life to special education in Prince George's County. And I often say the only reason I've always stayed in Prince George's or in our communities is I'm a homer. And uh I never want to lay down until it's better for me having been here. And we're not there yet. And so I don't see a need for me to leave yet. And being a part of this group, supporting Associate Bowman, supporting our family and our communities, will give me that opportunity from two sides. One, as an employee and a staff person during the day. And then a community member uh who exists in the evening beside you to make things better for our kids who will inherit what we leave.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Johnson?
Hello, everyone. My name is Tia Johnson. Um, I will be the administrative support for uh DIAB. Um, and many of you may have received emails from me just updating you on the first meeting as well as information uh regarding the agenda. And um, yeah, you know, I'm here if you have any questions, concerns. Um, uh, you have my email. Uh, my telephone number too is listed there as well, so. Um, I'm here if you need me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is really what it's all about, folks. It, the concept here is that board members, we can't advocate and develop policy in a vacuum. Right? We need to have the input of our community. And we need to be that bridge between the community and the school system. And so I cannot tell you enough how grateful I am to each and every one of you for applying our 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 school system representatives. You've been at work all day in the school system and coming after work. And all of you probably have been working to having your children. I have three myself. But I don't take it lightly that you're here, and I want to say thank you so much. Woo, talking, trying to drink my water and my soup while trying to, trying to talk too. Here we go. I'm moving on to item two point two. We're now going to vote on the Chair, Vice Chair, and Recording Secretary slash Note Taker. So pursuant to Board Policy seventeen hundred, I'm gonna just say DIAB. That's your, that's your crew right now. You guys are the DIAB. You must elect a Chair and Vice Chair to serve two-year terms. Most of these positions are currently vacant. We will have a vote this evening for these positions. Following these two votes, uh, we will vote on the Recording Secretary. Um, so we're now select a nominee for the Chair. So um the first person to respond will be considered. So do I have a volunteer to run for Chair?
I will run for Chair.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell. And just point of information, uh, Revel, I'm leaving it open for others to run as well, or do we vote on this one and then go to the next?
I do apologize. I was trying to help Ms. Payne join. What's your question again?
Um, so in the, in the past, if I remember correctly, with PCAC, um, I think we left it open for if there were more than, if there were several people. And then we would vote concurrently on all of them at the same time, or how how would you want me just proceed? Just, I think I.
Let's, let's go ahead and keep it open and allow people to vote. The only thing is that we would still need a majority for one given person, so we'll have to vote until we get a majority for one single person.
Okay. So we have um, is Stephanie Blackwell for Chair? Is there anyone else who would like to be considered for Chair? Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, can you, can you define the the responsibilities of the Chair? And will the Chair be um introducing what things get a vote? Like, what is the role of the Chair?
Sure, no, um, I don't mind answering that, that point of information, that first of clarity. So typically, it needs advisory boards. Um, for our school system generally, the Chair has been the person to um um moderate our meetings, to pull together the topics that the groups discuss. Um, to be a liaison between the board liaison and this group to ensure that the group adheres to the bylaws, that they have all of the requisite members and, you know, supporting and helping to promote the group, to to pull more members in. Um, but they certainly also are, have a big role in compiling the presentation to the school system. Now, all of you will work together on it, but that sort of your deliverable for the year is your your report and your policy suggestions and recommendations. So you would be leading, you know, supporting and leading on that and and putting that together. Okay, I'll buy it. Was there anybody else that'd be considered for Chair? Okay, um, so I'm gonna go to the vote now. Um, then we'll move on to Vice Chair. All right? Okay. So the question is, shall Stephanie Blackwell be appointed Chair of Disability? So the question is, shall Stephanie Blackwell be appointed Chair of Disability Issues Advisory Board? Ms. Johnson, please take a roll call vote. We need nine votes to pass.
Ms. Amaya?
Aye.
Ms. Sorry, Ms. Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Byrne? Ms. Carter? I'm s- I'm sorry, Ms. Carter?
Can you hear me?
No, I didn't hear your vote.
I I said aye.
Okay. Mrs. Dawson Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Jongo? Ms. Cottrell? Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Payne? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Vickery?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wingate Robinson?
Aye.
We have nine votes in the affirmative.
Okay, great. Um, Stephanie Blackwell is confirmed Chair. Okay, we will now select the nominee for Vice Chair. Um, the first person to respond will be considered. Do I have a volunteer?
Ms. Adam Stafford, I would like to self nominate.
Right, awesome. Do we have any others that would like to be considered for Vice Chair? All right, I'm going to move on now to the vote. The question is, is Ms. Teresa, um, Ms. Teresa Smith? Um, she I'm sorry. The question is, shall Teresa Smith be appointed Vice Chair of the Dis- of the DIAB? Well, Ms. Johnson, please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Amaya?
Aye.
Ms. Blackwell?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Byrne? Ms. Carter?
Can you hear me?
Yes. I didn't hear your vote.
Aye. Is there a way that I can type my vote in? Because it seems like when you when you when I do the sound check, you can hear me, but when I vote, you don't hear me.
Sure, you can type it in the chat. Mrs. Dawson Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Jongo? Ms. Cottrell? Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Payne?
Aye.
Ms. Vickery?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wingate Robinson?
Aye.
Uh, we have ten in the affirmative.
Thank you. Ms. Teresa Smith is confirmed as Vice Chair. Okay, lastly, we'll select a nominee for Recording Secretary or Note Taker. Um, the first person to respond will be considered. Do I have a volunteer?
I I'm volunteer to be the Secretary, I guess, or the Note Taker.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson William- Mrs. Dawson Williams. So the question is, shall shall Ms. Samantha Dawson Williams be appointed Recording Secretary or Note Taker for the Disability Issues Advisory Board? Ms. Johnson, please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Amaya?
Aye.
Ms. Blackwell?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Byrne? Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Jongo? Ms. Cottrell? Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Payne?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Vickery?
Aye.
Mrs. Wingate Robinson?
Aye.
We have ten in the affirmative.
Okay, wonderful. Um, Ms. Dawson Williams is confirmed as our Recording Secretary and Note Taker. All right, good job everybody. First order business done. Did it. Great job. Okay, now let's move on to item two point three, meeting dates and times for this school year. Pursuant to Board Policy seventeen hundred, the DIAB must meet at least seven times a year. So this meeting actually marks our first meeting. Um, it's important to mention, if a DIAB member does not attend more than fifty percent of the scheduled meetings, the DIAB Chair will follow, will report the absences and may request a replacement on the Board of Education. Um, now let's discuss six, um, the remaining six meeting dates and times that work best for the good of the group. Um, and I'll begin proposing some by just simply looking at the um first first. Guess, yes, this would be the, this this could be the second, maybe the second Tuesday of uh the month at uh five PM. And oh, thank you. And I see Ms. Bren- Ms. Bear- Ms. Bren. Um, I see your hand up. You can speak now. Thank you so much.
We can't hear you.
Yes, Ms. Byrne, I think you're on your muted. Your microphone's muted.
I'm sorry, was that was the request for the second Tuesday of every month?
So I just, um, so I just started a discussion with a suggestion. Um, but certainly this is just time for open discussion. You guys can find the time that works for everybody.
Second Tuesday of every month works for me.
All right, thank you.
Same for me. Sorry, I was looking down, going through my schedule.
Okay.
Oh, okay, you guys.
Can you all hear me now? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I missed that last bit. But in a nutshell, it'd be helpful to have a sense from uh the board and, you know, folks, I guess, on the, who are who are not the, on the parent side of things, like what are your expectations? What did this uh, the Disability Issues Advisory Board do in the past? I know I saw back in twenty eleven, they issued a report. And I'm I'm grateful that this group has been resumed, but it'd be helpful to have some context as to what 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 the expectations are uh so that that can also inform, you know, our discussions moving forward. Again, I don't know where that fits in here. Maybe it it doesn't, but I know personally it'd be helpful to me to have that sense.
Okay, um, we talked a little bit about the purpose of the board in the beginning. And our next section is going to be more of an open discussion. But for the purposes of choosing a time to meet, you all are going to be issuing a report to the board. And I think that my, these are just my personal suggestions. I I think that using this time together to tackle um common issues that you're hearing about in the community. So bringing them together here, having those discussions, um, uh bringing resources, maybe possibly even speakers. You know, having uh, you know, just convening to to um look at what are some best practices nationally. Um, those are some of my thoughts on how you might best use this time. Um, I know that our PCAC, um, they've also used some of their meetings as like getting to know you meetings and to come together to get to know one another and to really, you know, they developed a survey that they gave out to get a better idea of what some of the issues were. But it's really going to be up to you all. You all are going to be governing yourselves. Now, I hope that that made some sense there, but you know, it's it's those are some of the guidelines. Okay? Go to Ms. Payne and then Ms. Carter.
Hi, I just wondered, um, and I had some technical difficulty, so I apologize for that, but I've been listening since the beginning. When would the first meeting be? Uh, I'm okay with the second Tuesday, but just want to know um sort of the cadence.
It's like December tenth at this time would be the next time.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carter?
Um, so I I went on to the website for DIAB. I'm not sure if the information on the website was to serve as the bylaws, but um and and maybe this is something that needs to be discussed later. But when I looked at the website, I only saw mention of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which actually does not cover Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, nor does it cover IDEA. Um, and ADA, while it covers all disabled children, technically special education children, do not have to have a medical disability. Um, and so in that way, it would not give comprehensive coverage to all of the students that are receiving services under both IDEA and five oh four or the protections against discrimination that they are guaranteed under Title II of ADA.
I I definitely think that that is something that this group could re- you know, you could revise the bylaws to be more expansive for sure. I think in our next section in item two point four, if we could circle back to that, I think that could be a a good first step to make that shift. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Doyle. And if there's no further discussion, we can vote on Ms. Vickery. Go ahead.
Um, during the course of our discussions, uh if we are feeling like there's data that we need, numbers that we need, how will we go about receiving that data? I'm hoping that the school system is going to be transparent with us.
So my job as the Board Liaison, whoever sits in in this seat or works with you all as a Board Liaison would be to take that information back to our Board Director. Um, Revel, you just tell me if I'm getting the process right. And there's an entire quest system where board members can request data from the school system and they will provide it for you all prior to the meeting. Revel, tell me, um, Mr. Patrick, just tell me how you feel about that process.
Yes, absolutely. That is one avenue. Um, but also one of the, and I would assume when they uh, when this was originally created, we have representatives from different apartes. And so the, we do have some representatives from administration on here. And hopefully we can leverage that relationship. And if necessary, we can also go through um of Board Member Adam Stafford. My staff will always be here or myself to also leverage our side as well. So we have multiple avenues. And yes, our goal is to get you the data that you need to 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 um get the board the recommendations that you believe.
You, and if we can just, um, so this next part, this discussion right now, I just want to focus it just on the dates. Um, but our next section, we will get a little bit more expansive. So go ahead, Ms. Vickery.
I was just gonna actually bring us back to the dates. So so far, we have three people that have said the second Tuesday works for everybody. Are we there yet? Just because I have four calendars to manage. And then if this time is good for everyone, um, I know that this time is just putting this out as a discussion for me, um, starting at five o'clock is kind of okay. But as I mentioned in my introduction, I am married to an administrator, so if his school goes over, then I am the backup person to go get all the children. So five o'clock may not work for me. So I'm just putting that out there for you guys to think about, because I already know my times. But Tuesday works for me.
Okay, Tuesday works. Okay, um, go ahead. I just says your first name, Erica, but I know their last.
Yes, Wingate Robinson.
Yeah, Wingate Robinson, but.
Generally Tuesdays at that time will work. I know that I will have two conflicts, but otherwise it should be fine.
Perhaps five thirty, we might want to consider as people are getting off at five. Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Smith and then I'm I'll read out the dates and we can vote on them.
You actually just touched on what I was going to mention. Could we push it by thirty minutes? Because, you know, you got kids that's getting out of school as well.
Yeah. Okay, um, so I'm I'm gonna read out the dates and then we'll take a vote on this. Um, unless there's any other discussion about five thirty to seven thirty, birth of the second Tuesday of the month. Okay. So the next meeting would be, we're looking at December tenth, January thirteenth. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to mute another meeting. I'm going to make an ask specifically for December tenth. If we can either do either another date or do it later, um, because the board has policy and governance from five to seven. And so, um, we would either just start at seven or do another day specifically for December tenth. Um, I like the other person who's managing several calendars, so I just wanted to put that out there as an option as well.
Okay, um, would you, would the team be okay with moving to um December eleventh? That's the Wednesday just for that month? That be you guys see some heads nodding?
I'm sorry, this is a leader jury, Carter. I have another board meeting um on the eleventh. Yes.
At that, at from the five thirty to seven thirty time?
It 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 would be a tight squeeze for me. It would essentially mean that I would pick my kids up and then go into board meetings for the remainder of the evening. And I try not to do back to that board meetings.
How how is the ninth for you?
That's fine.
Monday, okay. How are other folks feeling about Monday the ninth? Five thirty to seven thirty, and that's just for December. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go with, um, so the dates would be Monday, uh, December ninth. Yeah, to hear uh Tuesday, January fourteenth. Uh, Tuesday, February eleventh. Tuesday, March eleventh. Uh, what is this? Tuesday, April eighth. Tuesday eight, I'm sorry, Tuesday, May thirteenth. I think that's six, but I'm just gonna throw the June one in there just in case I didn't get six. That would be uh Tuesday, June tenth. Okay, those are the dates. Okay. So the question is, shall the DIAB adopt the proposed meeting dates and times at five thirty, seven thirty for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year? Ms. Johnson, please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Amaya?
Um, I'm available Tuesdays until seven thirty, sorry, until six thirty. Will that be okay?
I think that we're leaving a two-hour block for these meetings. Um, you may, you all may find that this ends earlier. Generally, I say leave leave a two-hour block window for this. I would say because it seems as though we have a majority of people that are available during that time. I don't know. You all can tell me how you all want to proceed. I think having a two-hour block is a good idea because you don't know how long conversations will go. And we don't want to sell yourself short, so. All right, uh, Vice Chair Smith, do you want to weigh in on that?
I actually wanted to go back to a different item, and I realize we're in the middle of a vote. Is that okay?
Well, let's let's um get in the middle of this, but let's uh finish this vote and then we'll go back to your item. Okay, um, Ms. Carter?
Yeah, well, oh, what a, so, um, I I've seen boards operate a number of ways. There there could be consideration of having like subcommittees meet outside of the actual like committee. That way, when we come to a committee, we're not having to spend two hours in discussion. And in that way, it creates more flexibility for parents who aren't able to dedicate the full two hours.
I think that's something that you all, I see a lot of heads nodding, so I think that seems like something you all can determine as you all begin to govern. I think that's a great idea. So my suggestion would be to keep it with the two hours. Acknowledging that you all may not use a full two hours, right? I don't think we will this evening. And then you all can develop a structure of subcommittees to reduce the amount of time that you spend in the the, okay? Um, and just recognizing, and Mr. Fitzpatrick, correct me here, if you do have a subcommittee, it would need to be a public meeting as well. Um, depending on how many people would be there.
It depends on uh how many people would be there. Uh, if it's less than a quorum, no. It depends on, uh, how many people would be there. Uh, if it's less than a quorum, no, but we still want to still be open about it. Um, what I am looking at is just based off the two, the the date so far. We're going to have to just be creative about the technology, and I'll explore that, um, on my end, just to make sure that we are able to leverage this and have it broadcast at the same time.
Okay, um, so, uh, we're gonna go ahead and and vote, um, with with those considerations in mind. Okay, um, Ms. Ms. Johnson can continue with the role, please.
Ms. Amaya?
Aye.
Ms. Blackwell?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Byrne?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Jongo? Ms. Cutrell? Ms. Patrick?
Aye.
Ms. Payne?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Vickery?
Aye.
Mrs. Wingate Robinson?
Aye.
We have twelve affirmative.
Okay, thank you the most. The disability issues advisory board to convene on the proposed ti- dates and times, um, is adopted. Okay, I'm gonna move on now to item two point four, and, um, the topic here is advocating equal opportunity and accessibility to schools for individuals with disabilities. Um, we're gonna have a brief discussion on the importance of ad- advocating equal opportunity and accessibility to PGCPS schools for individuals with disabilities. Um, the Board of Education believes that equal opportunity and access to our school system for students, employees, and parents, and the public um, is critical to its mission. Um, so this is where the disability disability issues advisory board plays a crucial role. Um, the work of the D I A B is to ensure that individuals with disabilities have their access to educational resources, facilities, and services while promoting an inclusive and supportive learning environment for all. Um, would anyone else like to share their thoughts? And I'm gonna go to, um, Vice Chair Smith, um, and then open up the floor for discussion.
Um, I had actually raised my hand for another item I needed to refer back to, but I I could hold that to later. Um, one item that I that I have concern with, and it goes back to the point that Ms. Carter had raised about the law, the statutory requirements, um. We state in our document we're feasible, and that language is very concerning to me because any organization has to follow the law. So perhaps there was other intentions meant by the use of that language. I think that this is an item that this this ca- this board should revisit, um, in addition to the the statutory, um, sections of the law that would be applicable to this board. Um, then I also, from for my own edification, I need clarity as to whether or not this board is only looking at the scholars, or is it any individual with, um, a disability?
Actually, it'd be any individual, um, so this could include, um, our, our, uh, our staff as well. Mm-hmm, is there families as they're entering and, um, accessing our schools and resources as well? Thank you. Just wanna open it up if there are other other comments around item two point four.
Um, I I just, I guess I just have a question. Um, I don't see where the chat is activated. I don't know if that's just my view, but if we wanna share resources as we're discussing, because I do have a resource that I can share about the three pieces of legislation that I mentioned, and the intersectionality of them, but I don't see a space for me to share that link. And then also going forward, I think that it would be useful, especially if we're going to be um, reviewing data and talking about impact, or sharing, you know, evidence-based practices and research. We need to be able to, um, access a chat function.
I think that's a good suggestion. Right now, the, um, the technology is set up to be as a webinar. Um, because typically our our board members, our board meetings do not allow a chat feature for attendees. And so that's the way it's set up right now, um, because it it also impacts the way that it's able to be broadcasted. Um, so um, Mr. Fitzpatrick's gonna look into other ways that this can be more interactive. So I do think that it would be beneficial if you all could share resources here. Um, perhaps there's, there's a Q and A feature that's available on a webinar that maybe we could leverage to share and discuss if we can't, the chat feature for whatever reasons that we have to set up. Okay, I'm gonna go to Ms. Patrick, um, and then I'll go, oh, we have whiteboard feature. Yeah, let's, let's try that. Okay, yeah, we could experiment with that, too. Um, we're gonna go to Ms. Patrick and then Ms. Vickery.
Thank you, Board Member Adam Stafford. Um, so I just wanted to add that as we are advocating for disability rights to advise the board, I think, uh, it's gonna be important for us in our data collection and exploration phase. One, I think it's gonna be critical for us to identify phases to get us to develop that report, but also, um, to hear what barriers might be from the group here, our parents here, but also hearing what the district has identified as barriers, uh, to special education in general. I'd also like to encourage us to consider, I believe, like Ms. Carter mentioned earlier, potentially dividing and conquering in our future meetings, um, so that we can really dig deeply into the sections of this report defining the issues, uh, and potential solutions.
I agree. Go to Ms. Vickery now.
Just kinda hoping that we can build our agenda for our next meeting towards the end of this discussion, and maybe giving out some action items, um, because I agree with Ms. Patrick and Ms. Carter. We kinda need to know, um, what's out there that we don't know about, so maybe that could be one of our points, um. Ms. Blackwell and Ms. Smith, that could be one of the points that we have reported back into us from, um, the district at our next meeting, giving us what are the pain points that they see already, um, and then what are some of the stats around students and staff? Um, and then I'm still just gonna add on an extra point to push for us using the whiteboard. Um, for those with processing, um, disorders or delays, being able to visually see information versus auditorily taking in information. I too am one of those processing learners. Um, it is better for me to read it than to hear it um, and to visually see it. Um, so if we are the board around that, then we should also promote the use of those alternative learning methods, right? So. And as you learn, I'm a conversation mover, so I move conversations along, um, to make sure we stay on topic.
I'm moving now to Ms. Blackwell. What's your, Blackwell?
Okay, ha- ha. I understand everyone's frustration, the information that you all want to know far as data, about me working in the classroom every day with our kids that do have I E Ps and have been, my children have I E Ps, um. I've been doing this twenty-eight years. I've been at one school for twenty-eight years. I've been dealing with Prince George's County since nineteen ninety, uh, when services were, at that time, were abundant, and the school system did keep us informed about what services were available, what things are out here for our kids, um, but over time, things have changed. So I'm thankful for this advisory committee because now we can come together to help each other to make special education better in Prince George's County. Um, some of you all may know that the numbers every year grow in special education. So that means the demand of services are there for the kids that are in the classroom. Um, we had to look at training of the staff who work with with students who are I E Ps and five oh fours, and they understand the process and the needs of the students within the classroom. Um, I'm always told all the time that I need to provide training for people who come into my position as a parent professional, as a co-teacher, understanding instruction, how the I E P drives instruction of the students in the classroom, and the data come from the testing benchmarks and all the testing that the students take per during the school year. So it is a, is a lot to understand, but I am thankful for this advisory committee because then then we can come together as parents, educators, to make the I E P process in special education work because it does work. It really does work. As as a lot of hard work, all the stories you hear are not not always gonna be good because I could tell you stories about my son that can make you cry. At the time when autism was not looked at, it was looked at just behavior, not educating the child. So from moving from the past to now, there's a lot of things in place, but it still had to get a lot better. So those questions that everyone had to answer, a- ask the data that they want, and you see, the changes come about, they will come, but we ha- as a committee, we have to make sure those changes happen.
Right, for sure. Um, so I think one of the things that, um, I guess I'm kind of hearing from the group is that there's a data gathering need now, right? Um, so perhaps we could just take some time to think about, you know, some of the different buckets or different data requests they might have, um, and sort of putting together maybe, um, as I think that was Ms. Vickery mentioned, our our first agenda ideas, and perhaps circle back with the chair and vice chair to pu- pull together something. Um, and again, I'm just the liaison, so I'm not leading this group. This is you all as the leaders. That's what we want. So I'm just giving some suggestions, but feel free to take it in any direction you'd like. I'm gonna pass it over to, um, Vice Chair Smith.
I have an administrative question, and it might be from Mr. Fitzpatrick. Um, will this board have a, a, a email account set up? And additionally, will we have a Google Drive associated with that? So that if information needs to be shared, it can be done so via that means?
First, I'm gonna ask who's, whoever is sharing, can you please stop? Um, I'm not sure who's, um, sharing the whiteboard. Uh, we can make sure that these resources are added to board docs uh, at the appropriate time as a follow-up. We wanna make sure that we're, um, doing that. And so to answer your question, I can work to make sure that you all have an email address and a Google Drive setup. What I plan to do after this meeting is meet with the leadership of this board to go ahead and work with Ms. Adam Stafford and administration to set the yearly agenda, um, for moving forward, so we can kinda go with a plan in he- in mind. And so I think what will also be necessary, and I'm kinda going outside of the scope of your question, is, um, between this meeting and the next meeting, to really speak with the leadership, Ms. Adam Stafford, uh, of the leadership of this board and Ms. Adam Stafford about any suggestions, things. I've heard a few be thrown out at this meeting, right? Expanding the scope of the board, um, you know, what exact, you know, who are the targeted people? Those types of topics to be shared with the leadership, so that we can put it in the yearly agenda, and we can have, make sure that we have whoever we need at each meeting at the meeting to do a presentation, to share their education, and then you can provide the feedback.
Thank you.
We'll go to Ms. Payne, Ms. Vickery, and then Ms. Carter.
Yes, I was responding to the, um, request for what kind of data, and for me, I was thinking data regarding the, uh, physical buildings, right? Age of buildings, um, what's been done to equip buildings, that kind of thing.
That's great. I think, um, certainly we can get that from our, our, um, capital improvement office for sure. Um, we can send that request over to the school system. It's a great starting place. I'm gonna go to, I believe I said, Ms. Vickery, Ms. Carter, and then Ms. Doyle.
Um, I think there was someone who, um, Ms. Adam Stafford, could you remind me? Um, she was from the Capital Improvement Program, and she did a great presentation at the last board meeting. She would be a great person to have her come back. Uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you remember her name.
Shaila Jackson.
Yes, she would be great. Uh, she had a really good presentation with the the dates, the the, like, all of the data. It was amazing. I sat on that meeting the whole night watching her. Um, so she would be great to answer that question, and then the data I think we also need um, would be around just numbers, just raw numbers. How many elementary students are we looking at who have an I E P, who have a five oh four plan? How many middle school? How many, um, high school? And then across the whole spectrum of the system, and then including down to some of our specialty schools and our, um, early education centers. I think that would be great. And then I would suggest, because I'm not sure what Ms. Doyle and Ms. Carter are gonna say, and they have great points, and I wanna hear them first, but I would suggest we circle back to looking back at our calendar, and then picking those dates that we want these presentations to come into the committee. Um, so like, what day do we want the building information for Ms. Payne to come in and stuff like that? Especially if we don't get to the point where we're doing subcommittees, then we need to like, at least look at the calendar today and kinda start throwing out some dates of when we want the people to come in, so Mr. Fi- Fitzpatrick could start reaching out to them, or Ms. Johnson, I'm not sure who it would be, but whomever would reach out could start to do those things.
Definitely.
Um, so I think my question, um, I guess is tied to a comment, so, um, understanding that Dr. Sessoms, Elizabeth Sessoms, is over Student Support Services, which is over the five oh four plans. I think that she would be a critical member to be a part of this committee. Um, is there, uh, is there consideration for having that seat added to this committee? Because I think that construction is important for children that have physical disabilities, but there are a lot of buildings that are not emotionally or mentally accessible to the student population. And so when it comes to disability rights, statistically, we know that people, whether child or adult, they experience discrimination at higher rates when they have invisible disabilities.
I would actually thank you for that point, and what I would say, um, that would have to be a change in your bylaws, which you all could set through your next meeting topic, to change your bylaws to include that. Mm-hmm. Okay, I'm going to, um, Ms. Ms. Doyle, Ms. Patrick, um, Ms. Smith, and then, uh, Mr. Patrick, Fitzpatrick.
Thanks. I'm kind of new to being on an advisory board. Um, I'm wondering, and I wanna be like respectful of, you know, public meeting laws and everything, you know? I'm looking at the things that we need to talk about, and some of these, we could spend two hours talking about just like what kind of data we need, what kind of subcommittees we need, and I'm wondering, I don't know, can somebody set up a Google Doc, and just over the next month, we add things to it, and we can kind of get an idea of where people's brains are before the next meeting, and that would also allow people who are maybe, you know, slower processors and just like to think about things more deeply, to not have to come up with things on the fly in the middle of a meeting.
Yes, thank you for re- reaching, I'm, I'm sorry, thank you for ex- um, sharing your your thoughts there. Um, I think in this meeting, you know, we have to set some of the, um, sort of structural and foundational things, so doing the voting and coming up with some of these topics was sort of the purpose of today. And I'm anticipating in the future, your meetings will probably more, be more concise and more targeted. But one, one important thing about having shared documents is that we have to be careful with those, just because it could violate the Open Meetings Act, um, and so therefore, you know, generally, with board members, we don't operate in that way in terms of having shared documents that we're all working on at the same time. Um, however, I know that Mr. Fitzpatrick, uh, he's, uh, very masterful, thinking of ways that we can in have collaboration, um, and you all will be all on the same email thread as well. So, you know, we can pause this conversation. It doesn't have to be completed this evening. I think we're just starting it. And I think that you all, now that you have leadership, your leadership can, you know, requ- put together a form, like a Google form, and ask you guys to put your information inside the Google form, and then they can rank that information and share it back out with you. I just wanted to give us some space today to sort of start brainstorming, um, so we don't just kind of leave today only having, you know, done that, some of that foundational stuff. That was the thought there. Okay, um, I'm gonna go to, um, Ms. Patrick, and then Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Carter again.
Thank you. I did wanna inquire, um, just in advance, will it be allowed?
Will it be allowable for us to have access to data on the quantity and nature of due process complaints that have been submitted within the past year, for example? Um, I do know that some state complaint for, state complaint data for the state of Maryland, for example, fiscal year one is available and open accessible online right now. But will we be able to have access to that data and what are the um, appropriate channels of data sharing for this particular group?
I'll start the answer and I think, uh, Ms., uh, Associate Superintendent Bowman can also jump in on this. So as far as the process of data sharing, um, while administration has, there's one thing that we can always do is when there's a request in the meeting, we can take it as a follow-up, ask administration to provide it to us. And similar to, and I maybe was Ms. Swingspan, I don't remember who mentioned like, you know, having things in the fly. We would always po- post it on board docs the four days in advance to make sure that you all have time to review it. Um, each time as well. Now, again, Associate Superintendent Bowman can speak more about what data you actually have access to, but that'll be kind of like the logistical process that we can do. When you ask for data, um, in a meeting or in the, for the chair in the planning of the meeting, we would ask administration for it and it will always, so very, very, very rare, but we will discuss data that hasn't been put on board docs four days in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And based on what you shared, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I don't have anything to add to that. That's the process we follow.
So I know that we're having preliminary discussions about possible data, um, or areas of data that we may need. And I would just like to put on the table that we consider what type of questions that we are looking to get answered. Um, because we may not be able to tackle everything within the six to seven mi- meetings that we will have as a group. Um, so I think what's gonna be critical is us determining the questions and then kind of going from there. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Um, I just wanted to mention data sources that are already available to, um, I think it was, uh, Ms. Patrick's point. Um, the MSD data is technically supposed to be available on a quarter-by-quarter basis. I have already reached out to the state to inquire as to why quarters two through four for FY twenty-four have not been released and they reassured me that it would be released, um, in December, because I issued an MPIA. Um, there's also data that's available through the U.S. Department of Education in reference to disability discrimination complaints that have been launched at the county level. Um, they did update that dashboard within like the past six weeks, so I'm not as familiar with it as I used to be. But it is publicly available data that does, that has the PII removed. Um, and then my, and then I have a comment, well, I guess another comment, all of these things are comments. Um, or maybe it's a question, but it's a thought-provoking question. Um, I think with this being the DIAB, um, and again, I, I'm a very like, I guess, data-driven person, so you're always gonna hear me talk about statistics, but, um, again, statistically speaking, children that are no divergent, there's like a fifty percent chance that one of their first degree relatives is subclinical, meaning that as a first-degree relative, a parent, a sibling may have similar symptoms but not have met diagnostic criteria. So I think it's very important, understanding that this is a board created around, created around disability, um, rights that we don't kind of treat it as if, as if it's every other committee. We, we, we need to come into the committee looking for ways to make it accessible. Because honestly, in every other environment, um, disability rights is an afterthought. So I think we need to come into this as the founding members of this committee, asking, how can we make this committee as accessible as possible for those who come after us so that they don't have to self-identify? So that they don't have to be stressed about attending these meetings that may not be accessible because there is no way to share documents. There is no way to use a chat box. But these are things that are important when you have a disability that doesn't allow you to audibly track information. I myself was diagnosed with a disability recently and I do benefit from having visual representation. Um, and honestly, emails are very overwhelming for me because I receive so many because my children each have about five different medical specialists, so it's not my preferred method of working through data. Um, and so I do think that we owe it to ourselves as an accessible committee to try and find ways that work for us within the confines of the law, understanding that even within, even within this committee, we have to follow section five oh four and title two of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and none of us have to say that we're disabled.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. I was gonna ask about GoNets. Is there a place, uh, where we can go to see, because I'm hearing people saying what's allowed, what's not allowed as far as like using the technology to collaborate, uh, really wasn't understanding. That's my background for twenty-some years is IT. So I'm not really understanding why email's okay, but then like a document, the Google Doc is not when all of it can be shared. Uh, so that's my one thing, but I actually wanted to add to the advocacy, uh, for the data. Um, I've been finding, I wanted to get data, see if we can have data for all the teachers who have been trained in special education. I think that that's, I'm kind of concerned, uh, because I know when I was in school, special education was very separate. And now the kids are in general education and we don't really know who's trained to be working with our, our scholars and who's just kind of winging it. And it's very problematic and I think that's, that could really tamp down on suspensions and children getting in trouble, things like that when you know who's getting the training, who's not, and just wondering why it's not uh, mandatory when you're having all of the children who have special needs, you're telling them they have to be in his classroom and teachers don't seem to know. It seems like it's more like a voluntary thing and it shouldn't be. Um, so I would like data on that, um, who's trained, who's not, and then we can start to really look into why, why isn't this a mandatory thing when our students are sitting in those classrooms as well and need to be taught according to their, uh, specific disability. And then the next thing I wanted to talk about is the percentage of special educators who are actually certified. Um, we had recently something come up, finding out that one of our, um, someone who works with our children, who's in our IEP meetings, didn't have a certification that we saw in the system. So just wanting to get that data to make sure everyone has the necessary certifications so that our children can, we can ensure that our children are getting the services they need to thrive. And that's leading into the third thing is I feel like I want to see, um, data, I want to see more data of seeing how children are improving, um, who have special needs. I feel like there's no real barometer to show what's working and what's not working. Each year is just kind of like starting, you know, we're just kind of winging it in this, this is something like you have to see, is a child getting better? Is their need, special need improving? Is it still there? Is it getting worse? And how is that affecting their education and their, um, experience in the school, you know, school system? Are they getting suspended a lot? Are they getting sent to the office? Or how is that affecting them? And I want to see more of that data.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna take these as our last comments here. I want to go to Ms. Patrick and then Ms. Doyle and we'll, um, wrap up for this evening.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a final suggestion that in our agenda, our forthcoming agenda, uh, we have a bullet to identify our meeting norms. Um, norming on language, norming on our, our meeting expectations with one another, as been said uh, by my fellow colleagues, and then potentially an expanded conversation on the data buckets that we will plan to collect.
Go ahead to Ms. Doyle.
Just piggybacking on what Ms. Dawson Williams was talking about, not only our special educators, but our paraprofessionals and dedicated aides, our dedicated aides are paid less than, um, Chick-fil-A employees, you know? Are you gonna go work with a challenging kid and get hit? Spit at, kicked, you know, when that kid is going into meltdown? Or are you gonna go work at Chick-fil-A? The choice is kind of obvious. Um, they also don't receive, word on the streets, they don't receive very much training. Our, our paras and our dedicated aides are, and our ISCA's are critical to our kids' success and they are not getting the support or the pay that they need and deserve either.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms.
Uh, Ms. Adam Stafford, because I heard you want to wrap up, I wanted to go back to my, um, my one item, I'm trying to find it in my notes, is dealing with the meeting dates. Okay, when you opened up, you had stated that, um, we had to have seven meetings and this meeting included one of the seven. My question is, we also have to produce a report. So is that June meeting the time to produce the report? Because that would be considered an eighth meeting. So I just want to get some clarity on the number of meetings and when the report will have to be, um, presented.
Yes, so the report actually is going to be presented at the board meeting. Um, and so you will work with the board leadership once you have the report ready. So that could be a part of your first meeting after you all develop your bylaws, develop your, excuse me, your data request buckets or your, your focus questions. And you determine, okay, it's our, our, our timeline for developing this report. And then you work with the board leadership to schedule that this spring. So you present to the board and the public. Yeah.
So will we, as a, as a board, have to meet in June? Or do we stop meeting in May? Because May will, May will conclude the number of meetings that this board would need to have.
Okay, so if, if May is the seventh meeting, then that, that would probably be your last meeting. Um, and then I would say you could plan to do your report at the June meeting.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for that clarity.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You know, I'm just feeling so, I can't hear it in my voice. I'm just feeling so happy right now. My heart is so happy because I feel like we have the right people in the room. You know, you all are asking all the right questions. Yeah, you're, you're, um, thinking about these problems from a systemic lens. This is what I've been advocating for, for the past several years. And so I feel very grateful that we're finally at this point to really start to enact some change. So I want to say thank you so much for being here. Thank you to everyone for taking your time. So any follow-up items from our November sixth meeting are going to be posted on the board docs. I want to thank you for joining us for our first meeting of the year. I think we're off to a great start. Um, and I think that I, you know, that there's some really great work that this advisory board is going to do in advocating for our scholars and all the individuals with disabilities in the PGCPS community. So there being no further business, the time being now six twenty-six, um, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Appreciate you.